I would like to call this meeting to order. Welcome everyone out here for the Leighton City Council Meeting for April 15th. Our start time is 7:04. I appreciate your patience there. We were, our previous work meeting just ran a little bit behind, but for the, but for a good reason. So anyway, welcome. And I want to, as basically, I need to call the meeting to order. And as you guys know, we, we have one of our council members take care of the opening ceremony portion. This is the month of April. Councilmember Morris has been conducting this month, so I'm going to turn the time over to him.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight we'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance and then after I've asked our Fire Chief, Chief Kevin Ward, to offer the invocation. So if you please rise and repeat the Pledge of Allegiance after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, would you pray with me? Great, Father, we just thank you for the opportunity we have to gather tonight as we discuss the city business. And we're just so abundantly grateful for all that you provide here in this great country to live in and the freedoms that we have, Lord. We just know it's your divine providence for us and for us to be able to, to have this, this opportunity. Lord, we just pray that your presence will be here and guided, direct our discussion. We just thank you and praise you and give you the honor, praise and the glory. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Okay, thank you very much, Chief. Okay, Council, I'll need a motion to be able, regarding some minutes, and see if there's any corrections or not, so go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I just have a clarification on a, on an item that's in the, the minutes from January 13th, the work meeting. And this is either to Alex or Gary. I think it's to Gary because it quotes him. But, so on page seven of the minutes, we're talking about the Case Creek irrigation thing. And when you get to page seven, the bullet point below that says, "The city owned approximately 95% of the system which was pressurized, only 5% wasn't pressurized." Does the city own 5% of the, or 95% of Case Creek already? Okay, so how, interpret that sentence for me, or does something in that need to be changed?
I don't have it in front of me, so. I just kind of was trying to follow you, so.
We can pull that if you want, for, for the review and clarification.
Okay, yeah, let's, let's do that and I'll take a look at it.
Okay. So I'll entertain the motion.
I think it was in that previous paragraph before that, too.
Okay.
So then, I would advise that we adopt all the minutes except for, except for A, and allow you to do your research, make sure we get it properly documented.
So with that, then, Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the Leighton City Work Council Meeting, Council Work Meeting, January 21st, 2021, the minutes of the Council Work Meeting of February 4th, 2021, and the minutes of the Council Meeting from April 2021 as written, and postpone voting on January 13th, 2021 planning. That was a strategic planning meeting, minutes until clarification on that item.
Is there a second?
There was, there was just one spelling error, Kim. Where it talked about UTA and the trolley. It said readership instead of ridership. I, I can't pull it up right here. I'd find the page, just that little clarification.
You know which, okay.
I can find it.
No, I'll find it. Thanks.
Okay, any other corrections before we adopt them?
No, but I'd second the motion.
It's been moved in second to adopt the minutes as Councilmember Fitzpatrick stated. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, now we'll move on to our municipal announcements. And while I know some of us would, might have some announcements, I think I am going to actually ask Ms. Tessa Fashel of the Davis Arts Council to come up first, knowing that this is kind of an important day, and let her present to us her schedule.
All right, thank you so much for inviting me, Madam Mayor and Council, everyone. It's very good to see you all. We are so excited at Davis Arts Council to have announced our 2021 summer programming this year. I brought calendars for you all. I don't know what the protocol is here, if I can pass these around. But, and for anybody who's interested, these are available at DavisArts.org to download. But this is a calendar outlining our summer programming. Many people are familiar with Summer Nights with the Stars, which is our kind of banner concert series. We will have 14 concerts in that series this year. Some that people are really excited about include Marie Osmond, Three Dog Night, Air Supply, Gentry, Diamond Rio. But we have a fantastic regular season, really affordable prices, too, which is something that we really focus on. Many of those concerts you can see for $10. So we are excited to welcome people in for that. In addition, we hold a concert every Sunday night at the Kenley Amphitheater, June through August. This year, we're really excited because it's all first-time Kenley performers. So we are bringing in a lot of fantastic local talent to experience our stage for the first time. And then I also am really, really excited about our movies. I think they're really fun. They go, they kind of run the gamut. We have some romantic comedies, we have some kids' movies, we have some adventure movies. And after the Fourth of July, those will tie in with Fest. So while Leighton Fest is going on, their themes will tie in with our movies. I know that the Parks and Rec staff was very excited when I told them the first one after the Fourth of July is Jurassic Park. They got really excited about having a dinosaur day. So we are absolutely thrilled to be unveiling all of this and to be partnering with Leighton City on all of this.
Well, this is exciting news. I'm glad to see that we're able to get back to having some concerts. And I know you guys did a fantastic job last year on being able to make sure we had the proper distancing. And I know that you can handle it if that's what we're faced with this year.
We're really looking forward to it. And it's looking really good from a health and safety situation. We've worked closely with the Health Department. And so, you know, as the next eight weeks go on, we're going to keep an eye on it. And we're really looking forward to a great reopening.
You do a fantastic job and we appreciate you being here in our city and running the program that you do.
I know you go through a lot of decisions, but have you made a decision on who's Step and Fetch One and who's Step and Fetch Two?
You know, it's still tight. We may have Step and Fetch One and Step and Fetch A this year.
Okay, I think that'll work out.
Hey, you can, one is number one. All about seniority.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Anybody else have any comments?
Well, I guess I would just say I had the chance last year to work with Tessa and Davis Arts Council, and she does a great job. Honestly, just top-tier executive, just, I just couldn't be, couldn't be, you don't, you, I couldn't say you do, could do anything differently. We are very lucky to have you so close and to have such a good partnership with the city. And I'm just excited, this is a little bit, I mean, that's just nice and colorful and it feels a little bit like we're going, getting back to some sort of sense of normalcy. I had the COVID vaccine and now I get to show my kids that we can go watch Jurassic Park in the, in the park. I mean, it's, it, thank you for all you do for all the citizens of Leighton. We appreciate all you do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I mean, you have a fantastic group. And I want to say thank you to all the volunteers, because this whole, I know the Arts Council functions on volunteers. And so I got to give a shout out and say thank you to all them.
Absolutely, we do. They are wonderful, so we appreciate them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, does anyone else have any additional municipal events or announcements? I know I got a couple I would go over, but I want to certainly give you guys first opportunity. Okay, just two, well, two things that I really want to focus on in regard in our city. One is to make sure everybody's aware of the fact that our access to Andy Adams Park on the east side, that that's, that access is going to be closed so that they can do some road construction up in that area. And hopefully the target, it's going to be closed through the end of the month, basically is the way that's going to go. So anybody who frequents that area, just be aware of that. And, but on a good, on a more happier note, our restrooms are now open in all the parks. So thanks to the Parks and Rec Department for getting those open and hopefully everybody will be able to get out and enjoy, enjoy our parks. And that's really it, other than, do you want to talk about the safe harbor? Well, I'll turn some time over to Dawn since she was there.
The, the mayor and I had an opportunity this morning in the rain and cold. Can I say it was really cold? To attend a ground breaking of the new Prevention and Lifeline Center for the Safe Harbor Domestic Violence Shelter. It's going to be located just north of the Leighton Hospital. We had our, our senators and representatives that represent our state and from this area, the people from the Garn Foundation. There was a lot of people there today to support this. And construction should, dirt was turned and construction should start, I think, fairly soon. They are in a fundraising drive and are about 75% of where the, the funds need to be. So if you're interested in looking a good place to spend some money, it might be Contact Safe Harbor.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no more other announcements, I'll move on in the agenda. We do not have any petitions this time, but I will be willing to turn the time over to any citizen's comment. So if anyone has any comments that they'd like to come up and share, I'll entertain that at this time. Okay, seeing that there's none, Council, we'll go ahead and move on to our consent items. And with that, we've got two items. The first item will be presented by Chief Kevin Ward, and it's regarding the approval of an agreement between Davis County and the, well, let's just say it's about the paramedic service. I'm not going to read all that.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, I bring before you Resolution 21-19. This is to approve an agreement between Davis County, Farmington City, Fruit Heights City, Kaysville City, Clinton City, Leighton City, North Davis Fire District, South Davis Metro Fire Service Area, South Weaver City, and Syracuse City regarding paramedic services. So I'll provide a little bit of presentation here for background for you on this. So just a brief history of EMS in Davis County. Davis County Sheriff's Office used to provide ambulance service and paramedic service solely. Leighton City began providing ambulance service back in 1994, and then we began providing paramedic service in 2001. Eventually, other cities picked up their ambulance services. And then South Davis Metro, as part of the agreement with, when they joined with Battlefield City to create the fire district, started beginning paramedic service in 2005. So they, we became three agencies providing all the paramedic service within the county. Subsequent to what I further will present in this, the plan is for the Davis County Sheriff's Office will be discontinuing their paramedic service to those cities that aren't covered by the three entities I've discussed previously by 2023. Currently in Davis County, service is provided by nine total paramedic units, eight of which are receiving partial funding through a mill levy that was enacted, I believe, back in the early 1980. And a part of that mill levy, Leighton City did not start receiving that till about 2005. We operated from 2001, 2005 out of our own budget. And then with the, with the, an agreement with the Sheriff's Office, that funding was provided to Leighton City and South Davis Metro Fire for their units. The funding was initially distributed for eight units. However, about two years ago, South Davis Metro Fire Agency put a third paramedic unit into play without any additional funding. So that's why there's, we actually have nine units right now. Just as a basic service comparison, the ambulances, all the ambulances within the county are provided through the various fire department agencies that I just discussed. And they are all licensed to the EMT Advanced Level. ENT Advanced Level is an intermediate level of EMT training. It allows some, not only basic life support services, but some very limited advanced life support techniques, very limited amount of medications carried and IV access. And again, all the ambulances in the county are currently licensed at that level. For the EMT paramedic, that's the highest level of, of medical training for the EMT paramedic. That's about 1,200 to 1,500 hours of training, which also includes about over 700 hours of, of field internship and clinical time spent on the rescues out in the field and basically an internship under the direction of a, of a field preceptor. And this includes advanced airway techniques, innovation, numerous cardiac and other medications that we carry. And again, paramedics in, in Leighton City operates, operate at a high level and we have techniques and skills that we do that surpass what most of the other departments do within the state. For our response, based on what the dispatch protocol is on the, from the, the call taker in the dispatch center receives it, the 911 call, and depending on what the complaint, the chief complaint of the patient is, they will send out a, an ambulance and then they'll send out, a paramedic unit is needed. Currently, we have paramedic engines at Station 51 and Station 52. And then at our stations, we have an ambulance at each of our three stations. And Station 3 actually has a second ambulance, which right now is housed there. And when Station 4 is completed, that crew will move to Fire Station 4. So we'll have, all four of the ambulances will be covered through those, that area. And then we actually have the ability for a fifth ambulance to be staffed and cross-staffed by an engine, by the engine company. What it does is it takes the engine out of service, though. And so what that does is, you know, we, at times, we do need all five ambulances to be, to be used. And so part of us adding another paramedic unit on will be looking at staffing up an additional ambulance for that. We do have multiple overlapping incidents within the, the city. At about 53.9% of the time, we actually have numerous calls come in. That's why we have the additional ambulances that we requested. And we've seen about 170% increase since 2005. The EMS increases has been pretty significant. And so we are proposing that we move forward with staffing a third paramedic engine in July of 2022 or sometime thereafter. That just corresponds with the, with the next fiscal year. And so we would put a paramedic unit in, in place at, at Station 3. So we, we do follow the standard of care by the State Administrative Code, where we have two paramedics on the scene of a 911 call that requires advanced life support. One of the other standards we like to look at is National Fire Protection Association Standard 1710, which it, it discusses having an advanced life supporter, paramedics on the scene within nine minutes from dispatch, which counts for eight minutes of travel time and one minute of what we call reflex time or queue time or turnout time to get to the scene. And so as the county has grown and the need for paramedic service and, and law enforcement, of course, has expanded, there's been quite an additional impact. We've seen that in terms of response times in, especially in the other cities. And that's where, part of the, the, the issue for them wanting to provide paramedic services. They also have paramedic service currently provided by Davis County and the other cities where they have one paramedic on a, on a, on a unit. And those paramedics go to the location in whatever city that might be in. So there's times that those paramedics could be coming from, would, would have to go to West Point and have, they're coming from Kaysville or, or Farmington. And so that's just, you know, one of the, one of the other issues of response. So fire chiefs have, for years, have been discussing about the transition of the emergency medical services to, of the emergency paramedic services to the, to the different fire departments. Really, in, in spring of 2019, it gained a little bit of steam. And as we entered the end of, of 2019, we had discussions with the fire chiefs and Sheriff Sparks about that transition. And he was receptive to discussing the transition over. So there were several subcommittees created in terms of coverage and service delivery and revenue and expenses. And so as we hit in 2020, there were some different study areas that were looked at by those, those subcommittees. And we looked at basically four different coverage areas within the county. We had a North Davis County area, which really included Syracuse, West Point, Sunset, Clinton, Clearfield, and portions of Hill Air Force Base. And so discussing that, there was, there was talk of providing three paramedic units, one provided by Clinton, one for Syracuse, and one by the North Davis Fire District. Leighton City, we also would pick up providing paramedic service to Air Force, to, to Hill Air Force Base. We were initially had talked with providing that for South Weaver, but South Weaver has decided to implement their, of their own paramedic unit, which actually changes that number to the top from 11 paramedics to actually 12 paramedic units throughout the county. And then the Central Davis County area with Kaysville, Fruit Heights, and Farmington would have two units, one provided by Kaysville Fire Department, one by Farmington. And then South Davis Metro Fire would continue to serve their five-city service area with their three paramedic units. There's a county map. I want you to click on that real quick and they'll just show this. The, the reason I show you this map, it might, it's a little hard for you to see unless you've got it right in front of you there. But the, the whole point of this map is that this shows the distribution of where paramedic units would be. And this gives us the coverage that we are looking for in terms of the, the, that nine-minute, that nine-minute response. And so this is all blended in with all the different, where the different paramedic would be. The point is, is all of the, the, the county is entirely covered. And there you can see Leighton City and our coverage, be able to cover all of our, our cities with our paramedic units, so. Click out of that. So one of the goals we're looking for as we move with this program and everybody providing the service within the different fire departments is move towards a borderless system where regardless of geopolitical boundaries, there'll be response and, and we'll continue with our, our mutual aid agreements, but eventually look at getting to where we have automatic aid, where the closest unit is dispatched by the automative vehicle locator in it. We currently in, in Leighton City, we're really the only one in Davis County that, that does that. Our dispatchers send the closest unit, whether it's an ambulance or, or paramedic unit to the scene. The, the automatic vehicle locator determines that. And then the dispatcher's dispatched the closest unit for that to help decrease our response times. The other thing we wanted to make sure was we had good countywide training of our paramedics, that we had good continuity. So we had, all the paramedics were trained at the same level, that we were all operating together. And, and it's, it's a goal we have to kind of raise that standard of care up throughout the county. The paramedic response units, one of the thing we agreed upon is like, we, the fire departments wouldn't just put paramedics on ambulances. What they would do is they would actually staff up a separate unit as a, a paramedic squad. That would be like a utility truck, pickup truck with a utility bed and run that as a paramedic squad. You may have seen those running around. That would be the goal, instead of putting them on an ambulance, because ambulances, then they'd be tied up on a lot of basic calls where they, and it would, it would take that paramedic unit, that paramedic unit out of service. And so we'll, we'll continue to operate with paramedic engines, as will South Davis Metro Fire. And that allows for the same possibility to where that it keeps the ambulances reserved, where we will, they'll do all the transports, what, we'll just put paramedics on them when, when aboard and run with, ride with the patient in as, as needed. So the Davis County EMS Council will also continue to operate as part of the oversight. That's represented by all the fire chiefs in the county. And that, in, in conjunction with that, we'll be able to, you know, make sure that any, any problem situations that come up, that we can get those handled through the, through the county. So right now with the, with the, the transition timeline, just to highlight a couple of things on that, this has been discussed with, with many city councils. I believe this agreement has now been signed by, by seven entities right now. So we're in the, the number two phase of the adopting the interlocal agreement. Part of the other portion of this is the, what we call the paramedic, the public information effort due to the fact that we've received a mill levy from the county since 1980. We've been receiving payments since 2005. And now as that paramedic mill levy is, is being shifted from the county and going to the cities, we'll, we will take over that mill levy. So the plan is that our citizens will pay the exact same amount to Leighton, Leighton City under their property tax that they currently pay the county. So there won't be an increase in the amount that they pay. It's just that the transition is you'll pay, you won't pay to the county, you'll pay it to Leighton City. And we'll have that direct the funds there. Again, that helps pay for the, the portions of the services. So as the, as the county eliminates that, that paramedic tax levy in this next year, we'll be, you know, further discussions about that and the timeframe and as to when did that happen. So the cities will, will continue to pay for county paramedic service until they, the other cities, I should say, will continue to pay for county paramedic service until that, that service is disbanded. Right now, some of the other fire departments are already bringing up their staffing. They're sending people to paramedic school. They're hiring some personnel that are paramedics and, and acquiring the necessary equipment. And so the, the plan is that the Davis County Sheriff's Department would, would drop their service by the end of 2022 or January of 2023. And sometime along that timeframe in 2022, the various cities will pick up that, their, their paramedic service. So we, this doesn't affect us because we already provide our, our own service. Stafford recommend that the Council adopt Resolution 21-19 and authorize the mayor to sign the necessary documents.
Okay, Council, do you have any questions?
I have a couple, Chief Ward. So you talk about a unit, a paramedic unit. How many paramedics, I, there's two on it at a time, but how many paramedics do you need to staff one unit?
Well, with, with leave coverage and things like that, you'd really basically have to have a, for a single paramedic unit, you'd have to have at least a minimum of nine, just because you have to have two on a day. And in taking into account leave coverage and things like that, that would be the, the minimum.
Yeah, and I think that's important to know. When we're talking four units, we're talking 36 paramedics. I mean, we're, you know, it, it, that's a huge, a huge number, I think, for the city and, and for the residents to realize that, you know, we've got a good, good crew coming or, you know, being utilized through the.
Absolutely. And we do have a high level of, a high number of paramedics with the fact that we're able to, with paramedic engines, as firefighters promote to engineer and captain, they still maintain their paramedic license and still function as paramedics on a paramedic engine. Places that run squads typically, that paramedic no longer, when they promote to an engineer and drive the engine or they become a captain on the engine, they no longer function as a paramedic. And so we utilize this as a great career ladder where we, we're able to maintain and we have several multiple captain paramedics and engineer paramedics on our department.
Well, from a citizen's perspective, I'm, I'm grateful that we have this good level of medical care within our community. I hope I don't need you guys, but, you know. And then I just have a quick question. So the fact that UDOT has a highway that goes right down the middle of us and one coming out on the west of us, will we provide the services for those segments of, and I don't know how it currently works. I know Highway Patrol responds, but I don't know who goes medical or, or accidents, if you guys do or somebody else does.
Absolutely, we do. We, we provide, we provide the services anywhere within our licensed geographic boundary, which is anywhere within Leighton City, whether it's unincorporated area or state highways or wherever. And then additionally, we'll, we'll pick up that portion of Hill Air Force Base as well.
I think your key word that you spoke of earlier is it's borderless. That really makes this one big cohesive unit. Regardless where you're at, you got to just think of it as a borderless operation. But certainly we have the concentration here in our city. We appreciate what you've done.
Absolutely.
Anything else?
I have a question, Madam Mayor. Just a funding question, just thought about it. As far as Hill Air Force Base, I get the other residents in the counties, we get our property tax, we pay our property tax, but on the base, I'm assuming that's different with those residents on the base. Does that funding come through the, the base itself, the installation? Or how does that, the funding work?
Well, currently, currently we have, currently Leighton City has an agreement with the 75th Medical Group to provide, to provide ambulance service. So currently we provide ambulance service. As of May 1st, Hill Air Force Base will, will take over their own ambulance service. And then when the Davis County Sheriff's right now provide paramedic service, so, so when they no longer provide that, we, we will provide that. We don't assess them a fee for this, for, they don't get paid, they don't pay for us just to, to be there. They, they pay per response. If our paramedics respond up there and our paramedics provide paramedic level care, then there is a, there is a, a rate that's established by the State of Utah Bureau of EMS that provides for reimbursement, well, provides payment for Leighton City for the paramedic services rendered. So, you know, fortunately, it's the, the number of paramedic calls on the base that we would respond to would be fairly minimal. It could be 10 to 12, 15 maybe a month at the absolute most, where it's actually a paramedic level response. So, yeah, there's, there's no, being a federal institution, there's really no other way for us to do that. But that's how we do it with them.
Thanks.
Chief, I just wanted to say thanks for having such a great staff. I mean, this is a countywide function. And we're, basically, we've kind of blazed the trail in Leighton long before I got here in making sure that this is kind of the gold standard. This is how cities should operate. They should have a paramedic and they should be able to take care of their own. So I think just the fact that the county is able to have this option to be able to get out of the system is.
to be able to get out of the system is because Leighton has been doing it for a long time, and we can kind of help people. And for citizens, it's important for them to know that we don't know where you're going to be when you might have some sort of incident, right? If you're in Leighton, we know you're going to get taken care of, because we, we really value paramedic services here. But if you're in Syracuse seeing your kids, or if you're in Farmington shopping, or if you're in South Weaver, we want to make sure that everybody gets raised by the same tide. And I think that this is just a good thing for the citizens to know that, that we want everybody to be able to have the same coverage and care wherever they might have one of these incidents happen. And so thanks for the leadership in getting this and, and staff too. And Alex, I know you've been doing a lot of work on this. It's going to be better for the community at large, because we care about Leighton, but we also care about our neighbors in the other communities. And we want to make sure that they're getting the coverage as well. And so thanks for leading out on this and for all the, the fire department does.
Appreciate it. We have great staff. That's what makes this whole thing work. So appreciate all the, that our staff does to make this work. So then thank you, thank you for your support as well.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item number B, which is a preliminary plan for the Fairfield Place Town Homes. And our economic director, Mr. Chad Wilkinson, will present
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll shock you with a mustache real quick here before we get going. This mustache is brought to you by the Centerpoint Legacy Theory Theater at the Davis Performance Center for the Performing Arts. That's hard to get out that time. This application that's before you is, as was said, is for a preliminary plan for Fairfield Place Town Homes. The location of that development is, is there on the map. You can see that red dot representing the approximate location, 682 North Fairfield Road. The, the land use ordinance authorizes the city council as the land use authority for preliminary, preliminary plans for townhome developments in the CTH zone. That's why we're, we're here to talk tonight. This is again, just a little bit more detail on the location of the property. You can see the property there, right in this location. This was the subject of a recent, fairly recent, several months ago in November, the council approved a zone change to CTH for this property, about 1.2 acres, as you can see. The preliminary plan that was submitted is, is consistent with the conceptual plan that was shown at that time. There's 19 units shown there on the development plan. You can see this is served by some, some private streetways there that goes through the development. These are rear-loaded units. So the unit's interior will face onto a common landscaped area. Just show you the elevations, the proposed elevations of the development. These are two-story townhomes. The Planning Commission has reviewed this request for preliminary plan approval, and they are recommending that the city council approve this request for preliminary plan approval for this property. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, that actually concludes our consent items. So I will look for a motion regarding our consent items, both A and B at this time.
Okay, I will. I thought of since I spoke last time. Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent items. A, the agreement between Davis County, and I'm not going to, all of the other listed cities, regarding the paramedic services, Resolution 2119A, and then the preliminary plan for the Fairfield Place Town Homes at 682 North Fairfield Road.
Thank you. It's been moved in second that we approve the consent items, both A and B is presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? There you have it. It's unanimous. Okay, we have no public hearing. And as far as unfinished business?
I, I should have done this while the chief was still here, but maybe you can fill in for him. If not, I was in a meeting the other day with the chief, and I was just going to have him explain. We're really fortunate talking about our, our fire department and how good the officers are and the leadership. That Chief Ward has been appointed to the 988 Commission to help designate the, the phone number for the suicide prevention hotline. Can you add anything to that, or just that he's been put on, okay, he's been put on the committee. But again, I think that that shows that we've got some outstanding leadership and, and really value their, their opinion and stuff, you know, throughout the entire state. So I'm, I'm thrilled to see he's on that.
I would echo that. That's very good. I'm glad you remembered. Okay. I believe that then brings our meeting to a conclusion. So I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Dave Segman, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks, Hugh, for attending.